Those were bad.
Money worth spent.
Way better than my window, you know. You go call over there? Okay, welcome everyone to Hobbies June 15th. We are the consent agenda. Please rise for the potential agents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Had you keeping minutes tonight for us? Thank you. Would you start us off with a roll call attendance?
Okay. Ms. Thompson?
Present.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Fider?
Here.
Mr. McKay?
Here.
Ms. Segal Morris? And Mr. Currie?
Present.
Thank you. Any community announcements? I'll start with council. Any community announcements from the public? Yes?
David Applebaum, 39 Goose Drive. Just wanted to, representing Experience Yardly, just wanted to let you know that all the bands have been booked for our shortened musical in Maine, beginning Saturday, July 31st through September 4th. That'll be six Saturday evenings. And a list of the bands or musicians will be now very short. Thank you.
Is there a sign up genius help out as a volunteer this year, or how is that being handled?
Well, we have, we're doing a survey of people that showed interest in volunteering to find out where their strengths are, and we're looking back at those people. If we're short, we'll probably do another call round, and maybe we can do a sign up through Sign up Genius.
Yeah, so in the past, council members have supported volunteering at the event, so if anyone's interested, get in touch with Mr. Applebaum. Okay, public comments? This is the portion of the meeting where anyone in the public can make a comment about an item not on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please say your name and address, and please keep your comments to three minutes. Any public comment? Yes?
I have two. Dawn Perlmutter, 18 West College Avenue. Again, I'm following up on the insurance claim for the backhoe that ran over the electrical conduit. Has that gone through?
Any update on that, Paula?
No. So there's no update? Has the claim actually been filed? We're working on your write to know, and you'll get all the information. I mean, but this is for the general public. So this happened three months ago, and it was either a contractor or the property owner who ran over the electrical conduit, took all the lights out on Main Street, and in three months, no insurance claim has been filed, nobody's been held accountable for this, but yet the borough paid thousands of dollars.
We didn't say no insurance claim has been filed. We'd like everything on the record to be accurate and full, and so that's why we do suggest write to know requests for these types of records.
Okay, thank you.
No update at this point, though.
Okay, I do have, since our code enforcement officer is here, I have a question regarding the tattery taproom. According to the accessory use, it's not allowed to have a kitchen, and it's supposed to just be limited to a tasting room. It has been operating with a kitchen, cooking food. Curious as to why that's being allowed.
So I believe we've spoken on this topic at length, so they were allowed under that accessory use to reheat and prepare food on site and not cook food. I don't think there's anything else unless, Paula, would you like to comment? Wes, would you like to comment further on that?
So it hasn't been inspected.
There is a kitchen there. It's licensed and everything. So again, is there any reason why the code enforcement officer won't go there to inspect, to shut down a kitchen that is not supposed to be there?
I believe all violations that were found were looked into and communication was sent to the business owner. So the matter is being dealt with between the borough and the business owner.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, next we will consider the consent agenda dated June 15th. The items on the consent agenda, excuse me, the consent agenda are the approval of the minutes dated June 1st, the bills list dated June 15th, 2021, and the special event permit for the Yardly Car Festival on September 11th with a rain date of September 12th. Does anyone wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any comment? Comment from the public?
I have some comments on the bills list, Dawn Perlmutter, 18 West College Avenue. There's another items here, four large payments that have already been paid under general journal entries. They total $25,888.49. What do they represent? Payroll. Payroll? Is there any reason they're listed under general journal? Is that the normal process?
Yes.
Oh, okay, thank you. Another question is check number 943, Armor &amp; Sons Electric Incorporated invoice number 91002658 for $476.58. What does that represent?
Repair of streetlights.
Are these repairs related to the electrical conduit that was run over?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the public on the bill list? Thank Paula for answering those questions. Hearing none, I will call the question. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to the police report.
Thank you, ma'am. I only have one item tonight, and that's the replacement of our approved storage garages for police towing. Police Department receives tow services through approved storage garages pursuant to our Yardly Borough Code, Section 15804. For many years, the borough has utilized Superior Motors Service of Fairliss Hills, Pennsylvania, as our sole contractor for this service. Superior Motors Service is sole care business and advised the borough that this continues serving us until June 30th, 2021. The borough received letters of interest from interest to tow contractors, and an investigation was completed by a police supervisor to identify the two most qualified vendors to serve as our new approved storage garages. I would respectfully request the council consider designating Rob's Commercial Hauling of Bristol, Pennsylvania, and John's Auto Body and Towing of Morrisville, Pennsylvania, as our new approved storage garages on a monthly rotation schedule until amendment.
Thank you, chief. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? From council first.
Just, how often does this come up? This is the first time I've heard of it, but I haven't been here.
We've probably used, it hasn't come up in the last six-plus years.
Okay.
We've probably had superior, I'm guessing, about a decade.
It's as needed when you change in vendors.
Correct.
And how often do we utilize?
Tow services?
Yeah.
It's all as needed, I would say, on average, between two and six times a month.
Any questions from council? Questions from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. The solicitors, or the managers' report, sorry, skipped over you.
I just have a couple things tonight first. We received a letter from the governor that we need to apply for our American Rescue funds within five days of receiving the letter, so Patty and I will be working probably all day on this tomorrow, so we could apply for these funds and good use. The next thing, cornhole for the parking rack. They originally had an event permit for one night. We're getting a good amount of people signing up, so they want to do overflow on Wednesday night, so I just want to make sure it's okay with everybody that they do the overflow on Wednesdays.
So a consent of council, overflow date?
Let's play.
And the second thing I have is the sheroes that we talked about on Acton Avenue. I did get some information for everybody. Maintenance, borough would be responsible once PennDOT puts them down the first time. They can be painted, or they could be thermoplastic paint as well. They anticipate, really, they have no idea how many or how long it's going to take to get to the point where they need to be touched up. It depends on snow, ice, traffic, and everything. I did talk to Ken, it is something that he can do. I asked for a stencil as well from PennDOT, so they are going to work on that as well. It's something that we want. And from, it looks like it's approximately every 250 feet, so we'll have about 19 along the road of Acton Avenue all the way down to the river. But they would still like to know if it's something we would be interested in.
I'd like to comment on that, if I may. Can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, I just, I think that, thank you for giving information. I think that what we're at a place, sheroes, you know, recommending it because it's safer transport, potentially traffic calming to some extent. We don't know how much, but fact is, they're recommending it, and I think when it comes to crosswalks and sheroes, I just really don't want to give them one on council to say, well, I don't want to, you know, pay to paint and have somebody get hurt or killed and have that be on me. So I'd say, you know, paint does not sound reasonable to me, especially because Ken can do it, Guts is stencil, is Guts thermoplastic. They can be figured out. Let's not be penny wise at council.
Did we, so they're going to put them in, and then we just replace them, and that can be part of our normal street painting program?
Could be something as simple as him going out with a roller and painting over. Especially if it's a stencil, it would be even easier, but he could paint some as needed.
So do I hear, we should probably do a motion right off you on this?
I think so, yes.
Do I, do I hear a motion to?
Can I ask a quick question? What about, just Harb aesthetically, has there been any, I know this was proposed in the past, has there ever been any complaints from, you know, some of the people looking at more of the historical and aesthetic appeal of the town? I agree, there's a safety benefit, but I was just curious about that.
A lot of other towns that are in the historic districts as well have them. I believe they are in Doylestown? I thought it was Doylestown that they were showing. But I don't, I don't know if Harb would chime in on something like this. I could see if it was on a building or signage.
It's not under their purview, but we can certainly send them an informal email asking if they see any issues. So would somebody like to make a motion to that effect, pending informal thumbs up from Harb? Actually, I have to craft a motion.
I can't make a motion, but Harb, you're, you're exactly out of range of the bill.
So will someone make a motion to allow PennDOT to paint bike sheroes on Main Street, covering the cost?
Acton Avenue.
Acton Avenue. Acton Avenue.
He said so moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I guess we'll second it.
Is there any further discussion from council? Discussion from the public? Yes?
So the sheroes, are the pictures of the little bicycles on that?
Yes.
Okay, and it would go all the way from top Acton to the river? Oh, okay. I think it's a good idea.
Yes.
Are they on both directions, or just one direction?
I think both directions, yeah.
And it's under 25,000?
250,000.
Oh, gosh, okay.
There'd be approximately 19 on the.
Do you know the cost of repainting, or just out of curiosity?
Not definite.
Relatively affordable.
Hundreds. Any further discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Cutting him off. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. So jumping back to the first item you spoke about, though, so I don't know if you heard Paula, but we received a letter from the governor on Friday saying that we have five days to submit our project and reimbursement proposals for the ARPA funding. And if they don't receive it in those five days, they can't guarantee that we will receive any of the funds. The wording has also been changed from "you will get $263,000" to "you may get an allocation of up to $263." So we have been scrambling to pull together a list of projects for our proposal. Thank you for everyone for all of your time that you put into submitting. General Government did review the list just before this meeting. It's been changed a little bit since I emailed it out earlier. So the easy one is, we can, there's a formula that we can submit for 4.1% of our revenue in 2019, which is $76,000. So that's an easy one. We will put in for that. Beyond that, we obviously want to do the live stream and video equipment, which we have an updated quote there from Uri of 13, about $13,000. But we did have some questions about that system, Uri. So we, you know, we did, we have already spent money on video equipment a couple of years ago, so are we certain that that will be enough money to cover our needs so that it will really be a push and go system that will function for, you know, at least five years?
That's a really good question, and I think that, I think where the technology is, is that this past year, this caused a lot of ad companies to develop systems like this, but I think the one is not out yet. So it's probably still meant for sort of corporate video conferencing. So this is the most, like, sort of integrated system that I can find from my research. And what's good about it is it's essentially a high-end microphone camera system plugged into a regular laptop. So we're not, like, tied into any single software. And essentially, it's just better equipped to be able to pick up the sound in a room and have a better camera so that, you know, people can help buy it and can see it more easily. So it's kind of like to go upgraded, you know, laptop. It's essentially what it is that's made for a conference room. So I think it's a happy medium because the cost is pretty reasonable for what it is. And I think that's, we can use it for five years, whether we will or we won't, who knows it's going to be around the corner two or three years, but I don't see why not, at least solve for a while.
Yuri, is it, is it like service agnostic? So is it, you buy the equipment, then you run it yourself, or is there some type of subscription that goes with it to utilize it? Like, are the two things separate, or are these, they related?
Yeah, that's a great question. No, that's the thing, basically, it's Logitech makes it. They make a camera that is made for conference, you know, type for large, we're calling it a large conference room. Then they have a series of mics that pick up sound all around the table kind of thing, and all that plugged into a, like, basically an LCD television that we can mount. And then there's a laptop that plugs into the whole system, which is any laptop, and then you can run Zoom or whatever you want, and there's no fee to pay to anyone because it's just those parts that connect together.
I think that's the key, is you could run Zoom or Microsoft Teams or whatever your conferencing system is on this.
Yeah, or whatever comes out after that, because the way all the laptops know, this is the microphone, and this is the monitor. That's the camera, sorry, that's the camera, and that's the microphone. That's all it has to know.
So our feeling on general government was perhaps that's one option, and then maybe increase that budget to 25K so that we can get one quote from a more, you know, professional, traditional company who would come in and do install, and then decide, once we have that quote, which we'll go with. It seems as though this refund will be partial through the ARPA funding, so we have a little more room to make up the difference there. So that's that item. And then something that we would get full reimbursement for seems to be stormwater management. So we have a couple items that fall into this category. Jet cleaning at four locations and backflow preventers. Wes, can you talk a little bit about that?
We currently have four storm drain outlets that are not flowing at all. So this, we get them open up so we can get water out of the residential areas. One of the other areas is the tunnel, which, as everybody knows, is in the drain, goes underwater, so we can get that going. The one outflow on Brown Street at North Delaware Avenue, that, once that gets cleaned, that does have a backflow preventer on it, and what the backflow preventer does is it allows stormwater to go out to the river, but it prevents river water from coming back to into the neighborhood. So it can buy a lot of time, a big difference to the residents of, you know, in the 19 to 22 feet, high water episodes.
Thank you, Wes. And then it's kind of similarly, a river, stormwater management, specifically a pipe, 150-foot pipe that needs replacement or needs to be added there?
Needs to be added. The area from Garlets Pond south to Fold Street has no storm grants whatsoever. It's about 150 feet, and we have had problems there in the last 10 years. And typically, that is our last way out of Rivermark in high water events is Fold to Florence to North Delaware. So that would regain our exit traffic.
And then we also have a sidewalk stormwater management match on the grant we received of $37,500. And then, Matt, do you want to talk about your idea on the inactive projects?
Yeah, Matt, we talked about this in general government, so I'd love to kind of get your thoughts on this. But we were trying to figure out, this is a full match, this category, right? So are there other things, and I'm just throwing out, some of the inactive projects, like, for example, there's been some stormwater issues on, and Whiskey Hill, with some of the runoff there. I think there's some stuff that's come up around the creek that runs behind the tattery in that area, run through the golf course. So could we create a bigger bucket that would include a lot of different projects, call it 150 grand, and say, look, these are all the different projects we would use, and then have flexibility to kind of allocate it based on what we got quotes?
Yeah, we could do that, just, I mean, we're going to need stormwater management for the next phase of the sidewalk. Whiskey Hill's kind of taken care of already, we kind of remediated most of that. But yeah, there is, fine with that, too, that's going to be some possible remediation.
My only concern on the sidewalk is, I think we all want to use whatever this is toward that, but if they say you can't use it toward a, as a match, that's the only thing we could do about it.
Well, I mean, it's actually, we're actually putting in more money. It's not even just a match, it's just the stormwater. We have a grant for it, and then that's the match amount we're going to have to spend.
Above, anyway, so there's other ways to get to, yeah, I got it, there's other ways to do it.
Stormwater costs for the whole sidewalk project is probably for this phase and the next phase, they're over $30,000.
So we, I don't believe we're going to.
Well, I think, as you said, in general government, the concern is we submit for a small, relatively small project, like the Rivermark pipe project, they partially fund it, and then we have to spend that money on that, so we, you know, the quote comes in at really high, and then we have to do it. So if we tell them we're doing a whole bunch of things, they give us part of the money, we have a little bit more freedom to apply it towards our stormwater management program as a whole. So that's that piece. We would like to do a local nonprofit stimulus program, so it would be just between $1,000 and $5,000, where this is specifically laid out in ARPA guidelines. Local nonprofits have to provide evidence that they lost revenue last year in terms of charitable donations, and people could, nonprofits in the borough could apply, and we could select them from that pot that we're getting from this funding. Another idea would be for local businesses. Same idea, so we looked into the data, and most of our large businesses did already get stimulus money, but the small bit, smaller restaurants and businesses did not get any money, so it's possible that we could have another, like, $5,000 bucket for those folks to apply. And then the rest of the submissions were from the police department, as well as the borough staff, to digitalize property records. And the plan there would be to backfund those projects from the 76K in return revenue, so we wouldn't be specifically submitting those as line items for the stimulus money. So I know that's a lot of information there. Did I cover everything? I'd love to open it up for a discussion. Well, that's, so this is general government's recommendation. That's all the money that we just laid out. So, yes, other ideas that were submitted were EV charging stations, gators for emergency management in the police department. I think there was another idea in areas that we didn't catch, capture either, but those were, essentially, we did not prioritize those as falling within the, what we use this funding for. But if you want to bring them back to the table, this is just general government's recommendation. So I'd love to open it up for discussion. We have to submit this tomorrow if our timeline calculations are correct, so no pressure. Yes?
So I'd like to pull the gators back into the conversation, potentially, only because I've been through some of the floods and some of the emergency events, and I know how important the golf carts have become, and how limited golf carts are just as golf carts in a really bad emergency. There's neighborhoods that, in emergencies, get shut down, and a police car can't get there, and we really rely heavily on those golf carts, but unfortunately, we're limited to. So if we're talking about just proper planning for emergencies and resident service, if there's an opportunity to get them reimbursed, and I think that's an important kind of piece of equipment for the mission.
I think part of the strategy, what we were thinking about was, like, so for example, the $76,000 of lost revenue, we can do whatever we want with that, right?
Right, yeah, you don't have to tag something.
Maybe that's where you use it, right?
Right, you don't have to tag something specific, yeah.
But we want to get, we want to try and select, at least we were thinking, what are the highest probability things based on the criteria to get approved?
Fair enough.
And you can make an argument that that's the top of the list, right? I don't have a view of how they're going to respond to it, right? But I think the, the way we read it was, the stormwater stuff felt really good. The video conferencing, I think we felt like, felt good for a match, or, you know, with a, as a partial.
And then sticking with the stormwater thing, I was just whispering in Wes's ear. I know he, we have tagged some sidewalk work throughout the borough in front of residents' houses that does not properly drain and is heaved since icing and things like that, that has to do with stormwater management. So if there's concrete work, Wes has a list of the people he's tagged. I guess I'd have to be full disclosure that I'm one of those people, so if you take my house off of that list, that's fine, but, you know, there are, what'd you say, how many others, you think?
I'm ballparking, saying 30 or 40.
Yeah, so there's 30 or 40 properties throughout the borough that have non-draining sidewalks right now, which is clearly stormwater management.
So, you know, as the case generally is, last meeting we said the guidelines were tough, we're going to have trouble spending money, and now we have too many properties.
It's just general, it's just general money that, you know, and I apologize in the email you guys before.
No, not at all. Any other comments from council? Do we feel like we're, you know, close here?
Yeah, I'd opt for using it for whatever stormwater we can, because that seems to be never ending.
Comments from the, or I guess we should have a motion first, so I guess this will be a sloppy motion, because there's so much here, but let's cap, try and capture it all. Do I?
You can just say, you know, as submitted by the general government committee.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to direct the borough manager to submit for ARPA recovery funding as submitted by general government? And I'll send an updated one out with all of the discussions, please.
So moved. Second.
Is there any further discussion from council? Any discussion from the public? Yes?
Two things. I think you should probably increase the video conferencing amount to include, you know, all the conferences I've been in have screens, like, on both sides of the room. They're, they've come down on price, and it's just a matter of the cabling. So I think that would, I just think it's one of the most important things for communication, and maybe you should increase that a little bit more. The other thing is, I'm glad you included businesses, and when I was reading the grant, for some reason, hair salons, I'm not sure if they're still part of hospitality, but there are a lot of hair. but there are a lot of hair salons in Yardley that were hit really hard, like the lockdowns, probably even harder than the restaurants. And I was just wondering again if you could maybe increase that category to sort of cover some of them.
Thank you. Any other comments?
No.
Any other comments? Yes.
I just wanted to applaud the hard work that you're putting into this with the limited time that you have. So thank you, especially Paula and Patty. And I do agree with the recommendations that you made today. And I do like the idea of adding more audio visual that would open up the possibility of when we have to do presentations and stuff and not, you know, short it off the side of the wall and we could get like the appropriate equipment for those kind of situations. And so I think though, my point would be is, yes, we do need to kind of increase the funding for small businesses because those are the people that keep this down vibrant and without thriving, business community will not have it all. So if we, if you would consider that, I would appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments? So how do we feel about our amounts, given the discussion? Do we want to amend the motion? We do have to submit tomorrow an itemized budget for the project. So we're going to have to have very specific quotes tomorrow. So I don't know what we're, more we're able to collect on the audio visual equipment. We'll certainly try to do that and get the number right there. My understanding from councils, that's really our priority here. And then the rest, we will, we'll follow below that, but.
My only thought, just based on the feedback, is we had a range from general government of 1K to 5K. I think we should just go with 5K for local nonprofits and local small businesses and just say we're going to go at the high end of that range with the idea that that's the amount we're going to put aside for.
Could you clarify if that's a one, one time, times 5,000 or is that multiple instances?
The thinking with five would be that we, there would potentially be two to five recipients there.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, I agree with that. So I, that, that can be what is submitted by general government in the finalized. It's part of the range here. Any further discussion before I call the question? Okay, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Waited a long time for that time. Aye, and opposed.
You all muted, wait.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The solicitors report.
The only item I have is the, we received notice today that the governor's emergency declaration regarding the pandemic has officially rescinded as of today. So that is no longer in effect as of today. So we lose the ability or authorization to have remote meetings, which we've already stopped doing. So we're already in compliance with that aspect of the new rules, so.
Anything else that we should be aware of that we perhaps forgot was part of that that will affect us?
Well, basically, any type of waivers or things related to the pandemic where rules were essentially waived or forgiven or things of that nature. Basically, everything reverts back to what it was prior to the emergency declaration. So I think, I guess we'll need to consider that, you know, with all the things that we've done locally with respect to businesses and that sort of thing. So, you know, that'll need some analysis, I think.
And it's effective today, immediately?
The, yes, so the, again, the emergency declaration is no longer in effect as of today.
Any questions on that for Bucky?
I'm not sure if this has happened yet, but will the door to the office be open now? I don't know if it's been opened for a while. Oh, okay. And the hours, will they go back?
So far, right now, they're until 3:00.
So they're from 8:00 to 3:00? Okay.
Yes.
Solicitor, you said that it's effective immediately, but, I'm sorry, it sounds to my face. How much time, if any, since it takes place immediately, is there to get this in place so that anyone who's been affected by it has ample time and notice?
Yeah, unfortunately, so far, there's been no, you know, directive or, you know, clarity as to that. Other than the fact that, again, like authorization to have remote meetings, that's, that's gone. So, you know, current council, for instance, would not be able to meet on a Zoom call and be able to take valid action at this point. That's gone. But other than that, there's really been no clear direction on anything else.
So does that buy us time?
Well, I think, you know, basically, you need to be reasonable about these things and certainly a reasonable amount of time, whatever that is, can be built into the process.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but as far as the restaurants and the, you know, the provisions that have been made for them to use tents and so forth, I hope that we'll start to engage them in conversation so that they have plenty of time to make, you know, preparations if that change is going to take place in effect.
Yeah, I think we were supposed to talk about that this evening, but I'm not sure, do we have, do we have that? Okay, was that you?
David, we had a meeting, David said he was going to draft a kind of a resolution, but we have not received it.
So hopefully by next meeting, and I don't expect we're going to have an issue in the next two weeks with the restaurants operating as is for the time being, from my standpoint.
Thank you, I'm not raising my hand.
Maybe the new screen would block that. All right, anything further?
That's it.
Mayor's report.
Real quick, Yardley Borough was the proud host of the 47th Mayor's Luncheon last week. It's a luncheon of local Bucks County mayors. The Vault was a gracious host, the mayors paid out of their own pocket for lunch. So it's no cost to the borough, but it's an honor to have all the mayors come in and we were glad to host it. So it was well received and Chief Kelly stopped by and made a visit, which is always nice. So I just want to let you guys know that you can be proud that Yardley Borough was the host.
Great, thank you.
I have a question, so you're saying that the Vault hosted it and nobody had to pay?
No, the Vault was, the Vault was the place where we paid for lunch.
Okay. But it wasn't for two weeks?
The Vault was the place where we went and ate and we all paid for lunch.
Okay. Do you need to add that to our budget?
Out of our own pockets, paid for lunch.
Good for you.
Not on the bills.
We'll knock you on the head. That's what I'm hearing here. Okay, great. Council member reports. Mr. Curtin.
No report.
Mr. Ross.
Public Works was canceled, sign. The only thing that was really ongoing for Public Works, we're still waiting for the design team to finish up the design work for the sidewalk and we're still waiting for the final permitting for the Mary Yardley Bridge. There was a grant opportunity that was closing soon for the Arlo Grant, if anybody remembers it. We applied for it a couple of times, we didn't get it either time. The cost for that is about $2,000 to do all that. So I'm going to recommend that we don't proceed with that this year just because we have a lot of stuff going on. I want to finish the projects and then maybe we'll revisit it next year.
Thank you. Any questions?
Who's, I don't, I don't have the history, but who's that?
It's for like, it's like a crosswalk kind of flashing white kind of thing, but.
Traffic safety.
Yeah, like traffic safety, but we did try it a couple of times, we got denied both times. So we kind of got to go from a different angle if we want to try again, so.
Any questions for Mr. Ross on that? Mrs. Evil Morris is not in attendance, Mr. Blue is not in attendance. I have no report. Mr. McCann?
No report.
Mr. Finer?
I have no further report of the video conferencing discussion already had.
Thank you. Discussion items that we will move to our next meeting. Does anyone have any other business? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks for being here. Approve this. Massless and trade. How are you? It's good to see you. Good.
This is, I'm making a 263.
263.
So, yeah, I mean.
I'll give you the exact, the exact.
The session is really based on.
263, sorry, see, I hit it wrong.
Yes.
Of what we're submitting. Yeah, I think that's decretino to you?